Meeting of our Cary Planning and Zoning Board, and we will begin by adopting our agenda. If we have no amendments, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we'll move right on to approving our June 17th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any corrections? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the June 17th meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move right into our public hearing then. And before we do that, I'm just going to point out a couple of rules of the public hearing. We will begin with a staff presentation that gives us a lot of factual information about the case. Following that staff presentation, our applicant will have 10 minutes to present their perspective on the case. After the applicant presentation, we will open the public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak, please come down this stairway and speak at the podium to my right, to your left. You'll notice on the podium, there's a little black box, and when you begin, that box will have a green light on it. After four and a half minutes, that green light will turn to amber light. And after five minutes, it'll turn to red when you've used five minutes. I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks to be fair to other speakers. I ask you to be concise, avoid repetition. Where multiple people here have the same opinion, maybe you can pick a speaker to speak for you. At that point, I'll close the public hearing, and we will open the discussion up for questions from our board. As stated, we're going to begin with case 13 CPA 02 Twyla Road, Part II. Ms. Chandler?
Thank you. Good evening. This case, like I said, is Twyla Road, Part II. It is a town-initiated comprehensive plan amendment request for almost seven acres in West Cary. Just a reminder, Part I was also known as 11 CPA 05, which was approved in October 2012. Excuse me, with that case, the land use designation was very low-density residential and medium-density residential, and the applicant requested to change it to mixed use. So with this case, the subject properties are outlined in yellow on this vicinity map. It is located, the properties are located between Twyla Road and 540. Notification of this plan amendment request was sent to properties shown in yellow on this map. And this slide shows stream buffers and floodways within and around the subject parcels. There are parks and existing and proposed greenway trails in the vicinity, a proposed street-side trail bisects the subject property. Mooresville Parkway, or the Mooresville Parkway extension would bisect the subject parcels when completed, and that is, or will be a major thoroughfare. This slide shows an existing triangle transit route on Highway 55 to the right of the subject properties, and then to the left or west of the properties is a proposed C-Trans route. As per the Northwest Area Plan and the Southwest Area Plan, the Mooresville Parkway extension is the dividing line between the Northwest Area Plan and the Southwest Area Plan. As per those plans, the current land use designation for the subject properties is very low-density residential. Propose to change those to mixed use. At the Town Council Public Hearing on June 12th, two citizens spoke in favor of this request. Council members had no questions and made the comment that this case seemed like a no-brainer. Both the Northwest Area Plan and the Southwest Area Plan set the stage for reexamining the future land use for Twyla Road, and with this case, it would complete the transition that began with Twyla Road, Part I, or 11 CPA 05. The Land Development Ordinance cites four criteria to consider when determining whether or not a comprehensive plan amendment is necessary. The completion of the land use transition for this Twyla Road neighborhood could fall under both a change in projections or assumptions, as well as new issues, needs, or opportunities. Staff recommends approval of this comprehensive plan amendment request. Following the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Board may make a recommendation on this case. Since it's town-initiated, there is no applicant presentation?
You just made the applicant presentation.
You got it.
At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to address us to approach the podium.
Good evening. I'm J.W. Sharon, and as you may recall, I was here back with the residents in the neighborhood last year, working through with this request to try to coordinate all together to move as one. And as we've been marketing and looking for potential users on the site, two items continue to surface. And one of them being this piece, like, what about this piece? It's like the last piece of the puzzle to make it all fit. And also, but the timing too, that 540 is now open. The pieces that have been included from DOT, they're kind of like residual properties that they had acquired during construction, and so now they're left over. So they kind of round out and make this property look, you know, in the end of the day, something that could be in whole good for future development. We feel that this request, tying it back in with HMXD, will then help that move forward. And then the last item, of course, which we would like as much as you all to, to get the final stamp of approval for the design of the interchange itself. But we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Anyone else care to address us? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approached the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for discussion from the board. Questions?
Yes, I understand the entire property that is currently owned by either the Turnpike Authority or the Town of Cary. It's all publicly-owned property.
That is correct.
And is it currently all wooded?
We could look at an aerial view and see what the landscaping looks like. I'm not 100% sure about the landscaping.
It appeared to me that it is.
22. It appears that the majority would be.
And can you tell us a little bit about the long piece of property that's owned by the Turnpike Authority? That it's a portion of it? Now, there are two properties where there's a portion, one of which is down near Green Hope School Road, and of course, part of that is on the other side of the expressway, so Turnpike. So I understand that being split, but the other section up above that long stretch?
The long piece, that looks like a pencil?
Right.
Okay. The other piece of that is also on the opposite side of 540?
But is, I see that it tapers down to a point at one point, and then it looks like half of that property is subject to the change, and the other half is not.
Oh, the, on the land use plan, the portion that is shown as green is considered our Parks Recreation Open Space or Buffers category. So that would remain as-is. So there would be, it's clear that there's the extra buffer space between 540 and the Twyla Road neighborhood.
Okay, and the Town of Cary land is currently not used for anything?
No, not right now.
Just woods. Okay.
Other questions?
I want to make a motion that we forward 13 CPA 02 to council with a recommendation for approval.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Well, yes.
I'm sorry, discussion?
Just the statement. I'm going to oppose this. I think that the way things are going, first of all, I opposed any mixed use in this area. That was the, at a previous meeting. And I continue to hold that opposition, but also, even if it does become mixed use, I think there is a need for more green space. It appears that we will be losing a tremendous amount of green space in this area. And particularly since this is not, this is public property as it stands now, and completely wooded. I think that we should hold on to that in the form that it's in now, is totally, completely wooded. I think that will make the rest of the property in that area more valuable, and has a lot of benefits to the public, and this is publicly-owned property. So I'm going to, for that reason, oppose this.
Mr. Sigmund, I just have a question, actually. There are certain parts of the property that were shown in green and in the proposed zoning. What is that green area? Is that the one by the Turnpike Authority? In the current land use plan?
Okay.
You have certain parts which are in green, and in the proposed land use plan, you're showing them in the pink.
Right, in the current land use plan, the land use designation of the subject properties is very low-density residential. So we're proposing to change that to mixed use to match the rest of that area.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Please.
I think any controversy that may have occurred was when we, when the majority of this was changed to mixed use, and I agree with the staff's statement that this is a logical extension that completes it, so I'll support the motion.
Other comments?
I think Brent asked basically the same question. The other parcels there that create a contiguous parcel of land, they're all mixed use, correct?
Yes.
Other comments? In that case, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries eight to one. We're now going to move on to our next case, which is a case without a public hearing. It's 13 REZ 05 Jones House. Ms. Bierman?
Good evening. This is a rezoning request for the Jones House. The Town of Cary is the property owner. Site's about .39 acres. It's located at 324 South Academy Street. This is a vicinity map. You can see the property located at the northwest corner of Academy Street and Dry Avenue. It is in the Town Center Area Plan. The plan designation for the site is high-intensity mixed use. The existing zoning for the site is general commercial conditional use. This zoning has been in effect since 1987, when it was rezoned, I believe, from residential to allow some limited commercial use. This was done before the Town Center Area Plan was put in, to place and adopted in 2001. There were four zoning conditions placed on the property at that time. Those conditions are listed here, and there are a couple of conditions that affect the parking on the site. The proposed district is high-intensity mixed use, which is the zoning district that corresponds with the plan designation for the site. Would point out that in, when the Town Center Area Plan went into effect, this property would have been rezoned to HMXD at that time. However, because there had been a previous zoning with conditions, a conditional use zoning from the past, those conditions were just carried over with the general commercial designation. According to Cary's GIS maps, there are no stream buffers or floodplains on the site. Shows the Cary Parks and Greenways Plan, and there are no facilities along the frontage of this site existing or proposed. This shows the Cary Transportation Plan, both Dry Avenue and South Academy Street are minor thoroughfares. A traffic study was not required. This is because there's no net increase with the trip generation between, when comparing the existing use and the proposed use. This shows the transit maps. There is a C-Trans fixed route along South Academy Street. At the public hearing, there were no citizen speakers, and no comments were made by council members. That concludes staff's presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have questions? Mr. Warner?
What is the effective difference between what's being proposed versus what it is now in terms of density on that site?
In terms of density, there's, there's no, there's no real difference. Commercial uses are both allowed. The main difference between the two districts, and one of the reasons that it's needed, is there was an ordinance amendment that took place about two years ago, I think, that changed the parking requirements in the HMXD subject district in the Town Center to eliminate parking requirements. Because there were previous conditions and the existing zoning that's general commercial conditional use, then that provision in the HMXD district does not apply, and so the parking standards would be different and more intensive than other properties in the area that are zoned HMXD.
And again, we have a situation where it unifies the contiguous nature of the zoning for that parcel with what's north of it as well.
That's correct. It makes it consistent with all the other HMXD zoning districts in the area. And as you can see, based on this map, other than the, there's one other parcel that's along West Park Street that was a similar situation, where there had been a previous commercial zoning on that site.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Sigmund?
The conditional zoning requirements, you had a slide up here. Can you go back to that real quick?
The existing conditions?
Existing conditions, exactly. Parking limited. So these conditions, one through four, with this new zoning, will go away?
That's correct.
Okay. And you had talked about the reason this is still here is because when the TCAP was created, it wasn't changed at that time, something along those lines?
At the time, when, and this is typical whenever, with, when there's like a more of a town-wide, you know, larger-range type zoning, where there were existing conditions with the, rather than lose those conditions, they were just preserved and given a different designation so that none of the existing zoning conditions for rezoning cases were lost unless there was a deliberate effort to come through and do that.
Okay. So the condition of exterior appearance not to be changed will go away?
That's correct.
So my understanding is the exterior, is there any other provision that is protecting the exterior of that facility?
Well, just the basic design standards in the ordinance that we have.
Sure, sure. But that's a less restrictive design standard than this condition of no change into the exterior?
That would be, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I noticed this is, the mixed use part of the designation, does that require that this particular site have more than one use?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It might have been why Mr. Smith was coming, but it's my understanding that was the town's intent to have a preservation easement placed on this, which would then protect the exterior. I mean, over time, was that, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Smith. And it may not be a point of this rezoning case, but...
The town has a funded capital project to restore it to its historic character. And we would intend to keep it that way as long as the town owns it. If we do transfer it to private ownership, we would place a historic easement on it.
Sounds like there's a clear intent to preserve the exterior as originally.
But we have preservation right now.
Correct.
But the applicant is somewhat trustable.
Brent often brings up that zoning is zoning, and once you change it, you know, who owns it and what they intend to do with it is, you know, segregated to what the actual, what's actually in the books. And we're going to take that protection off by making this change without having a light condition added.
And that's sort of my follow-up question. The intent of the request indicated was for consistency with surrounding. And is it, does it gain more flexibility, or does it remove an obstacle, being that it's town-owned property?
Well, I think one of the things that it does change, if the zoning isn't changed, then whatever uses there would require parking at the same rate as a commercial use, which would basically be, I believe, five spaces per thousand square feet. So that's one of the big differences between the existing and proposed zoning, is that's a condition that does not apply to the other properties within the area in the downtown, because we explicit, I mean, we specifically went through and amended the ordinance to deal with reduced parking standards in the downtown. And this would, that flexibility would not apply to this property unless it's rezoned.
Other questions? Do we have a motion then? Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number 13 REZ 05 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Nath, I think you were in there by a nose.
I will let Mr. Shadik read the second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the...
I'm going to vote, I'm just, in the interest of giving our reasoning, as we've been discussing, I'm going to vote against the motion primarily because of the, because I have a concern about the exterior appearance, just that what we apply to everyone else we should be living by in the town, that we give everybody the same benefit of the doubt, or the same restriction. So I don't like the removal of that condition about the exterior appearance without understanding what other protections may be in place for that.
Can I ask a question at this point? With the proposed zoning, could we put a condition on it to protect the exterior appearance?
That, you could make a recommendation that that condition be added?
We have a motion. Would you like to offer a friendly amendment to a motion? I'm trying to give you a...
I'm just thinking rules-wise how that fits, because voting, if my vote is contingent on that actually being part of...
Mr. Warner made a motion.
We can't add the condition. No, I don't want to add anything to Mr. Warner's condition. But I'm confident that council is hearing our concerns, and if they choose to do that, they will do that.
I would be happy to amend my motion to include a recommendation that protects the exterior of the historic property, or building that sits on the property now.
Mr. Nath, are you...
I will, I will support that motion, except I might want to just say significantly maintain the exterior appearance for the historical property.
I agree.
If there are minor modifications required, then we should be able to do that. The town should be able to do that. I would just add the word significant modification.
Include that.
Okay, so we have an amended motion that recommends approval with a stipulation that the external appearance be, the current exterior appearance be significantly protected. Is that correct?
I have a question. Is it a stipulation that that's included, or is it a recommendation to...
I think you would have to ask the applicant, which is the town, if they would offer a condition to answer that question.
Right, right.
We could, and I think based on, based on your comments and explanation of what you are looking for, we could then craft specific language to take forward to capture that, if you were comfortable with that.
Now, just to clarify, I understand that we're talking about preserving the historic external appearance as opposed to the current, where they might differ somewhat due to more modern changes.
I think, I mean, the more information you can provide with, I mean, regarding that, whether it's, I mean, the historic nature, whether it's color, I mean, the more information you give us, the more
Well, my concern is that we'd be as, as close to conforming to the historic presentation of the House.
I think the question might, I'm sorry, might be current appearance versus historical appearance. Which one do we want? Are you...
Yeah, right. You can't say you don't want it changed, and then say you want the historic, because what's there now is not the historic, so...
I'll point out that the zoning condition on the existing zoning that we were looking to protect was, appearance was not to be changed, which doesn't suggest that we are changing it back to some historical definition, which might be hard to define. It suggested that we were protecting as it is today. And so we need to ask our...
What we're saying is, we want to protect a historically significant building. For example, the building itself has, I think, a vinyl siding or aluminum siding. We're not trying to protect the aluminum siding appearance. We're trying to protect the historic building that hopefully one day will be brought back to its grand splendor of years past.
You're correct, Mr. Warner. We are going, we already have the bids in. We're getting ready to start construction, and we will be removing the vinyl siding, going back to the wood siding that was originally on the house. And the front porch is enclosed by glass. We'll be removing that to go back to the porch the way it originally was. Those will be the major changes that you'll see. Otherwise, all the trim work and everything is being restored and repainted and preserved.
Do something with that enclosed porch?
We will use the porch, but we'll be taking the glass off, so it looks like an old-fashioned porch again.
I think the architectural features are substantially maintained in their historic condition. Kind of similar to the Cary Arts Center across the street. There are new windows there. There are new columns there. I don't think anyone would say it was substantially changed. It was actually reverted to its more historic condition, but it's what we're all used to seeing, spruced up, so...
So are we satisfied that the revised motion accomplishes what we're talking about? In that case, I'm going to call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And we're going to move on to REZ, 13 REZ 03 Park at Westlake.
This item, this is a request to apply initial Town of Cary zoning to about 21.5 acres in the Park at Westlake. the Park at Westlake. This is a vicinity map that shows a subject property. This particular request includes three lots designated for open space or recreation use. These are the last lots within the Park at Westlake. Over the last 10 years or so, you've seen about 20 cases for the annexation and application of initial zoning within these areas. So this is the final one, and we'll complete that. Just as a reminder, the Park at Westlake is a cluster subdivision, was approved by Wake County with an agreement that it would be annexed as the property developed. The current zoning districts for the subject parcels are Residential 20 and Residential 30 in Wake County. The proposed district is Resource Recreation, and this is a district that corresponds most closely with the existing and proposed use of the property for open space or recreation. And this is reflected, is reflected in the overall cluster subdivision plan. Residential use would not be allowed on these properties. The land use plan designation is low or very low density residential and parks in open The subject properties do contain and basically entirely consist of floodway and flood hazard areas. The applicant is currently working with staff to dedicate a 30-foot greenway easement that will encompass area, or encompass the boundary basically of the Park at Westlake, south of Optimus Farm Road. There were no citizen comments or board comments or council comments at the public hearing. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? We've, we've seen this one a number of times. As a matter of fact, it feels like we're losing an old friend. We've been talking about this one for so long.
I do have some questions. Under the proposed zoning, would it be allowed that the area, some of the area be cleared for ball fields or parking lots or anything like that?
The, one of the parcels, parcel on the south side here is actually adjacent to the pool, and in there, in the cluster subdivision plan, that area is owned by the, will be owned by the homeowners association and would be designated for recreation use. From a land use standpoint, to the extent that, you know, a recreation-type facility such as a field could be designed so that it met all the other requirements of the ordinance related to stormwater and things of that nature, it would be possible to have some recreation-type amenity in that area.
But it could be cleared, and that'd be what it is now.
That would be a possibility.
What about the rest of that?
The rest of that is very, there's a greenway that you can...
I saw on a previous slide, it showed where the greenway would be.
The green line shows where a 30-foot easement that we're in the process of working with the applicant to get that easement recorded and to thread the greenway through there. The property is, is low, quite a bit of it is wet, so it's, you know, limited with where the greenway can be placed. But the town, the town will be working towards fitting the greenway through that area. But that's the only improvement that would be proposed within that.
Hearing done. Do we have a motion, please?
May I? Mr. Chairman, I move that board forward case number 13 REZ 03 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
I'll second.
We have a second discussion?
I'll quickly say that, as Beerman pointed out, there have been about 20 of these come in piecemeal, and what we learned over the years was that there's a pre-existing agreement that really establishes what's going to happen in a way almost, you know, regardless of what we might prefer, given modern-day Town of Cary standards. And I voted against some of these, I voted for some of these, and I'll just say hallelujah, it's the last one.
My comment is that the decision that was made some time ago by the Town of Cary to select the option number three to be developed through Wake County using Cary utilities and have sections of the subdivision annexed to the town prior to any lot being transferred, that was the right decision of the Town of Cary Council. I think because of that, now we have this property within the Town of Cary.
No other comments? In that case, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries nine to zero. I believe that concludes our business for tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we have successfully got a perfect vote. Again, motion to adjourn.